Commission and Library Board reconsider or reevaluate the replacement of those two trees to level out the sidewalk. Trees are important, as you know, and I'm hoping that there's an alternate solution to this Article 37 rather than replacing those trees. It's a beautiful sycamore tree. Not many of those around. It'd be nice to keep them, so thank you.
Any further debate on Article 37? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Oh, hi Cynthia. I didn't recognize you.
Hi. How are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Good. Um, I'm, thank you. My name is Cynthia Setfin, and I'm a Harwich resident. I live in the woods, here in the center of town. Trees are my closest neighbors. I speak tonight to express my extreme opposition and disappointment in learning that two trees in front of Brooks Free Library are being scheduled to be cut down due to some evidence of raising, lifting of the bricks due to root growth. These trees are residents of Harwich as well. They are alive and well. Trees serve many great purposes. They breathe, they provide oxygen, they clean our air, their canopy provides shade, they provide character and life to our center of town, they provide a safe habitat for our birds, insects, and other various living things. Trees are mighty, and they deserve to be honored, and I hope that we can find a way to keep those trees, whether it be in living where they are or with removal if that's what's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Any further debate on the motion? Yes.
Linda Sebula for the Brooks Free Library trustees. If we would be, I'm sure, willing to consider if those trees can be saved, we will do so, but we would still like to have this article passed so that if they can't be saved, we can replace them.
Yes, great. Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Joanne Brown. I'm a library trustee at the Brooks Free Library. In 2015, preservation planner, planning architect McGinn, Liam Calso, in association with landscape architects Brown, Richardson, Rowe, completed the assessment of the exterior of the Brooks Free Library building. The study noticed that the brick pavers were showing signs of settling and uplifting, mostly due to the growth of the root systems of the two trees in the sidewalk area. The recommendations to repair and mitigate further damage would be to replace the existing trees with deeper taproot systems. In 2019, town meeting approved funds to do these sidewalks repairs. The existing tree roots continue to add to the deterioration of the sidewalk, and it creates a safety issue for pedestrians. It should be noted that these trees are not original to the property and have been replaced over the years. The trustees were advised that the funds approved in 2019 may not be sufficient at today's cost to replace both sidewalk, ensuring ADA compliance, and replace the trees. Since the building is in the historic Harwich Center, the trustees desire an appropriate streetscape so as to maintain and enhance the view of both the library and the general vicinity. Therefore, the trustees voted to request the Select Board to put forth an article to repurpose unused funds from an old article in 2013 for replacement of mature, appropriately-sized trees for the sidewalk area. The trustees of the Brooks Library respectfully request that you support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Yes, sir.
Art Bowden, Harwich. I'm against removing the two trees in front of the library. I generally walk through Harwich Center about every day, and I usually walk by the library. Now, I have to admit that the sidewalk is a little wavy, just a little. Now, if you want a litmus test on what the condition of our regular, rest of our sidewalks are in the Harwich Center, those, that sidewalk in front of the library is in perfect condition compared to some of the other ones. So if we're going to repair the sidewalk in front of the library, let's repair all the sidewalks in Harwich Center. Now, I, Mike, we talked about this last week. We've got $50,000 in a budget. I know it doesn't go very far for sidewalks, but let's start. But until that happens, I'm against taking down those trees. I know they're not very pretty, but I'm not very pretty either, and, and I, I don't think anyone wants to cut my legs off and throw me in a, in a scrap heap. But maybe they do. But anyways, save the trees, please.
Thank you, sir. Further debate? Yes, sir.
Scott Degnan, 18 Lower County Road. Just quickly, I also oppose this article. I think $25,000 to remove two trees, whereas the sidewalk is about 97% flat is a ridiculous amount of money. I drive by the library every single day, and if it hadn't been for this warrant, I would not even have noticed that there was a problem with the, with the sidewalk. In addition, my guess is that the vast majority of library patrons enter the building in the rear because that's where the parking lot is, and I would strongly vote, recommend to vote against this expenditure of $25,000. Thank you.
Further debate? Ms. McCarty, Joan McCarty.
Hi, Joan McCarty, Harwich Port. Our, the money that we're asking for is something we already have in our budget, has already been voted by the town. The sidewalks are going to be done. They're not going to leave them, to use a figure like 97% is ridiculous. You couldn't ride a bicycle over those sidewalks. They're dangerous, and there are people trying to walk, and people walking with kids, and who cares if they're going in the door or if they're walking by? It's their safety, not a tree that you like that will be replaced with something with roots that go down instead of out so that the foundation of the library is safe and so that the sidewalk is safe. This is all money that we have that we're just asking to move from one bucket to another. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Otten, are you up again on this article?
I'm going to ask a question, whether or not it's appropriate to amend this article to remove the phrase "including replacement of two trees along Main Street with trees whose roots do not damage sidewalks."
You'd need to draft that in writing. Happy to assist. That's the only way we can, I, I need the motion in writing if you're, if you're thinking of making a motion to amend.
Yeah, I could go for it.
Okay.
Please, please. Your amendment would be, I move that the main motion be amended to read as follows. I move that the article be accepted and adopted as printed, except that the phrase "including the replacement of two trees along Main Street with two trees whose roots do not," be deleted. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Otten will be reading a motion to amend. Mr. Otten.
Hello. Here we are. I move that the main motion be amended to read as follows. I move that the article be accepted as printed, except that the phrase "including the replacement of two trees along Main Street with trees whose roots do not damage sidewalks" be deleted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. So we now, we have a main motion before us that's to accept and adopt the article as printed, and Mr. Otten has brought an amendment before the meeting to delete the phrase "including the replacement of the two trees along Main Street with roots, with trees whose roots do not damage sidewalks." Debate on that amendment? We're going to consider that amendment first. Yes, ma'am.
Noreen Donahue Headwaters, speaking on my own behalf. Just a question, Mr. Moderator. Since the only money being approved in this is the $25,000, couldn't, wouldn't it be simpler just to not have an amendment and vote it either up or down?
That could be a reason for people to vote against the amendment.
Okay.
Any further debate on the amendment? Yes.
Good evening. Jenny Hewitt, Library Director. We share your concern for trees and the streetscape, and that's why the trustees submitted this article. Without this, the town appropriated nine, in 2019, the town appropriated $90,000 for the sidewalk repair, and that including removal of the trees and replacement of the trees. With inflation and, you know, cost increases, it's not clear that there would be sufficient funds. And by the way, this is a DPW project. It's a public works project. It's not a library project. So the concern was, we wanted to ensure that there were funds to replace the trees. If you vote to strike that sentence or vote this article down, that means the project should still get done. The $90,000 has been appropriated. It's in the DPW project queue to get done, but they may not have funds to replace the trees. And we want to make sure that they're, are mature trees of the right kind. One of the trees, the largest one, is a London plane tree. Google that. They've been banned in some places because of the damage that they do. They were planted all over London in the 1800s to, they, they help mitigate pollution, and they can do well in an urban environment. That's because their roots went out against pavement and sidewalks and foundations. And that tree is about 10 feet away from the library, so we're going to wait till we have a problem? That tree is, by the way, that kind of tree can live for 200 years. It's not mature yet. So at some point, it's going to cause a problem. If it's not now, it'll be down the line. So we would urge you to vote for this, I mean, to vote the amendment down and support this article if you want to preserve trees in the streetscape. Thank you.
Ms. Hewitt, just a question so that the voters are clear. I, I think you indicated this is a DPW project. It's going to happen, I think you said, whether this article is passed or not, but it may happen with the trees being removed and nothing being put in their place. Is that what you suggested?
That was our concern due to cost increases. That's what we were hearing, that there may not be sufficient funds to replace the trees. So the trustees asked for this article, old article, to be repurposed so there would be funds to replace the trees. What I mean by it's a DPW article, let me just clarify, before centralized maintenance, we did the big exterior project on the library, and that included the streetscape and the trees and the sidewalk. And so the trustees submitted the article in 2019, but it's a DPW project to manage, and, you know, they'll be going out and doing further engineering work and deciding how it's going to get done and how, that's, that's not, not something that the library would control. We just wanted to make sure that it's clear that we want trees in the streetscape, mature trees of the right kind, and so that we preserve the historical look of the center.
Okay. So do the trustees believe they have control over whether the trees get removed or not?
I, I'm not sure how to answer that. That's a, that's a, in the transition from the trustees, we have an interest in it, sure, and I'm sure DPW would listen. It's just a question of, are they going to have the funds for that? And hopefully, this $25,000 added would make sure that they have the funds for that.
Okay. So we're back on the motion to amend, which is to amend the main motion by having the language "including the replacement of two trees along Main Street with trees whose roots do not damage sidewalks" be deleted. Any further debate on the amendment? Mr. McManus.
Yeah, I, I just want to reemphasize what Noreen Donahue said. If you take, if you vote this amendment, which the removal and replacement of the trees is the only thing that the amendment, that the article is, is asking for, you've essentially killed the article, and there'd be no reason to vote on the main, main art, main amendment or the main question if, if the amendment gets passed.
The, the language in the main question, just so the voters are clear, Mr. McManus, that says that this money will be for the repair of the brick sidewalk at Brooks Free Library remains. So we are voting money for the repair of the brick sidewalk, even if that language is deleted. Any further debate? Mr. Kakounis.
I find myself in a peculiar situation because I'm not a huge fan of sidewalks. I moved to Harwich 40 years ago because you didn't have a lot of sidewalks, and I kind of liked that. But on this particular one, I have to, I have to tell you, I am not going to support the amendment. Trees are trees. I think this shows good municipal planning. Any of you who have done work in your yard know that you have a tree that grows with, with very shallow roots. It's difficult. If we spend money and we put a sidewalk there, and we don't put some kind of a thing around these roots or adjust the sidewalk somehow, we're going to be back repairing it again. And I have to give the library trustees a lot of credit for taking this on. They had a feeling that the trees were going to be removed due to the construction of the sidewalk, and I'm sure it's going to make it easier and passable, especially those who are handicapped, and they want to replace the trees. I mean, quite frankly, I, I wouldn't want to take a chance and remove the language that says they're going to replace the trees because that doesn't mean that they're not going to come in and cut them down and not put new ones. So I do not support the amendment.
Any further debate on the amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote on the amendment, unless this gentleman, no, he's not. Okay. So the amendment before you, again, just review, we're on Article 37. We have a main motion that it be accepted and adopted as printed. The amendment we're going to vote on now would delete the language from the article that says "the replacement of two trees along Main Street with trees whose roots do not damage sidewalks" would be deleted. All those in favor of the amendment is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The amendment does not carry. So we're back to the original main motion. Is there any further debate on the main motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the main motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It is a vote. Article 38. 2004 wastewater debt. The Saffetown vote to transfer from wastewater retained earnings, $858,742 for FY 2024 wastewater enterprise operating budget. Mr. Hughes.
I move that Article 38 be accepted and adopted, and that $858,742 be transferred from the wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to the FY 2024 wastewater enterprise fund operating budget for the purpose of debt payments.
Second.
All right. Motion to Article 38, parrots the article. It's accept and adopt, and the sum is $858,742 to be transferred from the water enterprise fund retained earnings. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote, a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 39. This is revolving funds. I'm not going to read this article in its entirety. There's a chart there in your warrant for you. Do we have a positive motion from the Finance Committee? We, that's right, we don't. I'll recognize Selectman Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 39 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Can I have that?
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion on 39. It's accept and adopt as printed. Debate?
Mr. DeCosta, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did not make a positive motion on this article, but we do want to make it clear that we want this article to pass. The Finance Committee wants to take this opportunity, let the meeting know that we will be recommending changes to the entire approach to revolving funds over the next year so we can come back to you with changes for the next budget cycle. We hope to work with the Select Board and their appointees to make these changes. The present system, by many of the listed revolving accounts of collecting fees to run programs or services involves many other departments of the town to run, but it does not allow for the collection of fees to go into the general fund to support the other departments that are involved. Many of the programs and services offered have been around for years and are known entities and can be budgeted. Prior to revolving funds, all these programs and services were included in the operating budget, and the revenue was deposited in the general fund. This can be done again. This is especially true for 204 Sisson Road Municipal Building Revolving Fund. Unlike any other building in Harwich, the operating costs of the building at 204 Sisson Road, heat, lights, electricity, everything are paid through the revolving fund and not in the operating budget. This needs to change. Again, the Finance Committee wants to make changes to the future of this article, but we want to make it clear that we do want this article to pass this year. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My comments are relative to the article and not to any previous speaker, but I would want the Assembly to know that the purpose of Article 39 is an annual purpose. Every year, under the statutes, we must establish first a spending limit, so that's what you see broken out on the table. So these are the caps on the revolving funds. These caps have not changed in two years. And then we also need to determine the purpose of the current balance, and as you can see, we have those balances available for expenditure, which is why we ask for adoption of the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion before you is that Article 39 be accepted and adopted. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 40. This is a transfer of land on Queen Anne Road for disposition by the Select Board. Mr. Hughes.
I move that Article 40 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's a move, and second, that Article 40 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Mr. Kakounis. You might want to sit in the first row in the bleachers, Leo, so that, or does that give you additional time to collect your thoughts as you approach the microphone?
I, I actually thought someone else was going to get up and take on this, but I'll, I'll give it a shot, whatever the heck. Mr. Otten, is he still in the room? Because this, he and I are going to be together on this one. Listen now, Mr. Otten, please. Thank you. I'm sorry. Threw, threw the moderator to you. I stood in front of this body, I don't know how many times, asking you not to sell these lots. Originally, when they were brought forward, they were going to be sold and used to buy trucks. Had a problem with that. Then they were brought forward, and the money was going to be put in some other fund, and now I understand that the money is going to be spent to acquire other land. I am going to apologize right now to everyone in this room and Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. I'm sorry, the Town Moderator. I find you all a bunch of hypocrites, seriously. I sat here when you all voted, or the then Legislative Body voted to put in the DCPC and take Mr. Masaline's land and turn it into two-and-a-half acre zoning, basically killing the possibility of a developer like Mr. McGowan who wants to buy a 40,000 square foot lot and build an affordable home. Here we are 10 years later, and you're all crying that we can't build affordable homes here because we go to two acre zoning. Why did we go to two acre zoning or two-and-a-half acre zoning? Because we didn't want to cut trees down. We wanted to have a nice winding road, and we wanted to save the environment, and we wanted to cut down on septic systems. Now we have four industrial lots for sale in the industrial section of town. And quite frankly, I like Queen Anne Road. I spend a lot of time on Queen Anne Road. I go to the dump quite often, and I drive it back and forth. It's an appealing road to drive on. We had a lot a number of years ago that was going to be made into a pet cemetery that angered a bunch of people at Legislative Body, and they decided they didn't want that, so the Selectmen, by virtually having the power, sold it. Now it's clear cut, right to the property lines, all the way around, not a shrubbery on it, never mind a tree. And it's been, not blacktop, but certainly some type of hard material put down there. Now you're being asked tonight to sell some other lots that you own. You own them. Please, when you get up to the mic or when you vote, think about this. You own them. I said five, 10 years ago, don't sell them. They're the last remaining industrial lots that we have available on Queen Anne Road. The town might want to use them. At that time, I think I said something silly, like, you know, 50 years from now, we may need a rocket launching pad or something. What a great place to put it. But then again, you know, 20 years ago, if I told you I was going to be carrying around a computer in my pocket, you would all laugh at me. We have an opportunity, which is realistic. We have open cable Wi-Fi line that comes down the center of the highway. Why aren't we looking at putting a Wi-Fi tower there, hooking into that, giving us all free, the taxpayers and the town, free Wi-Fi? I could sit here and come up with 100 ideas, but the thing that makes you all a bunch of hypocrites, and I really apologize, but I know how, better to say it, you're about to vote to sell four industrial lots or three industrial lots, which clearly are going to be clear cut and used for industrial purposes. And I will argue and debate with anyone, an industrial one acre lot, clear cut with equipment parked on it, is a much more possible, possible environmental hazard than having a million dollar home built out on an acre lot somewhere with one septic system, with no trees cut down except for the driveway. So, you know, you don't want that house built. You buy land to stop development, but now you're going to turn around and sell these lots. I'm opposed to it. I will ask you again, and I do stand in front of you proudly because 10 years ago, they were chomping at the bit to sell them for 200 grand. 200. And I told them then, they're only going to go up in value, and if you have children and grandchildren that are going to stay here, I would have said 10 years ago, they could be worth a million dollars soon. Guess what? They just sold the other one for a million bucks. These are valuable pieces of land. We don't know if we're going to need them in the future. I encourage you, please, save some trees, Mr. Otten. Turn this down. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Elaine Shovelin, I am Chair of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, and our committee had voted to support this article. Just to let people know, when a property is brought to our attention, we have a very extensive evaluation sheet that we go through. A member of the committee goes out and actually walks the property and notes everything about it as to whether it is suitable for conservation or housing or for whatever use possible. These lots, right now, you're correct, they are an industrial area, so they're not suitable for housing. And as we went through our list and evaluated, we found that there is really no real, good resource for the town to use, and they could be sold, and the money then used to acquire properties that would provide housing and other housing and other things, recreation or whatever, for the town. So we fully support it, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt Article forty-two? Excuse me, forty.
Chair.
Mr. Otten. I'll get your next, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You know, any lot that's vacant, that is not used or occupied, is valuable. It's valuable for the nature that resides there, the plants, the insects, the snakes, the birds. So I too would be opposed to selling these three lots, just given the nature value of property. And we don't very easily assign dollar values to nature. We ignore it. We push it aside and say, oh, we're going to sell this for whatever. But please, in this case, let's keep the nature value of all these lots in our minds before we vote. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Judith Underwood, Harwich Center. I'm one of your water wastewater commissioners, but I'm speaking as myself tonight. I do not always agree with Mr. Kakounis, but in this case, I support what he says. You know, we have a pretty large town. We don't have a lot of industrial space. We don't know where we're going to be in ten years for resources for water and wastewater system. I think it's prudent of us to hold on to this land at this point. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Again, Elaine Shovelin. Actually, this property was considered by, and we spoke with our town Conservation Commissioner, and the agreement was that there was no real conservation need on these properties. So it's not a good resource. Right now, it's filled with garbage. People have... There has been garbage and stuff thrown all over the place. There's encroachment by the properties on either side of them. They're really just filled with junk, and it needs to be cleared out. And again, it is industrial zone, and that's all that can go there is industrial. So you're not taking anything away from housing. You're not taking... And you're not, it's not of any conservation, real conservation value, other than there's trees and, you know, weeds and things that, you know, that's it. So... There. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. McCaskill, Selectman McCaskill.
Good evening. And with respect to Leo Kakounis, he did stand here ten years ago because we were trying to buy trucks with money from land. And this year, the Board of Selectmen voted against something that was brought before us, to sell that piece of land that you voted last night to dispose of the money, two seventy-six Queen Anne Road, which was one million, five hundred and five thousand and one dollar that we raised from that one piece of property. It is not clear-cut. There is still trees there. The other lots, with all due respect to Mr. Otten and nature, have a highway fence on one side and Queen Anne Road on the other side, and the only thing on that land, other than probably salamanders running through there, would be trash. And we did take the time to walk those properties. This is an industrial piece of land and an industrial area. We have businesses that want to move to the town of Harwich, which will give us tax revenue, which will give us excise tax from trucks, which will give employment, possibly some housing opportunities above said commercial buildings. And as we did last night, we voted on Article twenty-two, which was two seventy-six Queen Anne Road, that we got one-point-five million for, and you voted to put it into a fund that we're going to not only look to purchase other land, which kudos to the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, they've done a tremendous amount of work identifying properties over the last twelve years, bringing them before the board, and they generally go nowhere. They've identified three large parcels of land that could be used for housing, recreation, conservation, and more importantly, we have about a seven-million-dollar tax debt right now, and accruing interest and penalties in principle. Three million of that belongs to owners unknown and miscellaneous parcels. Now, these are the same pieces of land that we keep hearing the debate about, about the clear-cutting and developments going in it. We now have an opportunity to not tax you, but to raise money, to create money, and solve the problem of others researching these titles and purchasing this land through land court takings, and then clear-cutting these large tracts of land. We've identified land, and the only other way to do this is to tax you to get to that point. The Judah Eldredge property out in East Harwich, we had to escrow seven-hundred thousand dollars of money to make that happen. And that money, some of that money came from CPC and other sources. This gives us a bucket of money to go alongside the one-point-five million you voted last night, and the five-hundred thousand that you voted two years ago, to continue to work to take care of that three-million-dollar worth of owners unknown, or we can allow others to continue to do it, and then cut the roads and make these developments on the taxpayers' back. We, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, strongly support this article.
Further debate? Yes, sir.
Charles Gluska, T. Barry Adams, Harwich Center. I think Mr. McCaskill has answered my question. And just to be clear, so it sounds like the town's plan right now, if we vote approval to the sale of these lands, is for the same, will probably be for the same purpose as the conveyance we voted last evening at the session, putting them back into that same fund for the same purpose. My question was going to be, what does the town have any immediate plans for the use of these funds if we were to vote the approval to the articles?
Thank you. Further debate on the motion under Article forty? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is a disposition of real estate, so it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule it got the necessary two-thirds vote. Article forty-one, one-seventy-eight Queen Anne Road, similar article for disposition of this piece of property. This one's point-seven-nine-two acres. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-one be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion on Article forty-one, which has been second, is accept and adopt as printed. Any debate? A lot of what you heard on forty applies to the forty-one and forty-two as well. Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority. Article forty-two. This is for two forty-six Queen Anne Road. And this one's an acre and a half. It's at two forty-six. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-two be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion on Article forty-two is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Again, we need a two-thirds majority in order for this to pass. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority. Article forty-three. This is an amendment of the general bylaws. And before I turn to Mr. Hughes, well, actually, why don't I get the motion on the floor, Mr. Hughes?
I move Article forty-three be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been accepted and adopted as printed. I think Linda Sebula was going to make a comment, or did you cover this previously, Linda, on the bylaw review, Charter Review Committee? I don't think you covered this one. You did? Maybe you could remind the voters, if you would.
All right, Linda Sebula is speaking for the Bylaw Charter Review Committee. And the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, as per the Harwich Charter, has reviewed Articles forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six that are included in the warrant for this town meeting. These articles would make modest changes to both the charter and bylaw language. Our review was limited to identifying possible discrepancies between the requested changes and the existing language. No conflicts were identified, and since the Bylaw Charter Review Committee put forth most of these to the Select Board, we're happy that they put them forth in articles, but we also have voted to support these articles.
Thank you, Ms. Sebula. This Article forty-three adds two alternates to the Board of Health that has five full-time members. That's the grabberment of it. Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt under Article forty-three? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article forty-four is another amendment to the general bylaws of the town code. Mr. Hughes, do we have a unanimous vote? I mean, a motion on this one?
I move Article forty-four be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
And since this one is perhaps of some interest, particularly at this town meeting session, let me read it. It's to amend Chapter two-seventy-one of the town code. To, let's just see where the additional language is. It's changing "may" on, "Non-voters shall not address the town meeting without a majority consent thereof, provided, however, that the moderator," and it crosses out the word "may" and says "shall," "allow a non-resident department head to speak on any article, the subject matter of which might affect that department, or in response to questions from the floor." So it clarifies that particular issue that sometimes we run into, only for department heads. Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt forty-four? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article forty-five, this is an actual charter amendment. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-five be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article forty-five is accept and adopt as printed. Anyone want to present this one to the voters, or they're... Doesn't look like it. Any comments from bylaw and charter review, other than what you already did, Ms. Sebula?
Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? I'll put it to a vote. The motion is to accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So now we're on Article, let's see, forty-six. Turn the page. Home rule petition attainable housing. So this is a, an article to see if the town will vote to vote special legislation to amend the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust under Chapter one-forty. It allows the, it would allow, if the legislature passed it, that funds in the Affordable Housing Trust would be allowed to be utilized for attainable housing, as it's defined in the bylaw, which is up to two-hundred percent average median income. Right now, they can only go up to eighty percent of average median income, or if they're using CPC funds, up to a hundred percent. So this would give them more flexibility if this legislation was passed. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-six be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article forty-six is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Mr. Kakounis.
I see that this has been brought forth by a petitioner. Could I ask you, Mr. Moderator, through you, to the members of the trust, the chairman of the trust, to comment on this? Is this something that they have reviewed and have gone through the process of, as I mentioned a number of times last night, public hearings? This is kind of an important move, and I'm just curious to where they stand on it, and I guess, why is it being brought forth by a petitioner?
Don Howe. Selectman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, I stand to thank Mr. McManus about this. It's an initiative that the governor has been trying. We've been saying for years that there's a notch out of affordable housing. You get to a certain level, and we can't do anything more because the money is encumbered. We can't build that lower-middle-class housing that we so desperately need. This is an opportunity for us to piece that together and allow the trust, it's not just the trust, by the way. This would count for anything that would be eligible for affordable housing funds. Right now, that gets capped variously depending on the source of the income to it, eighty percent, sixty percent, it depends on what it is. This will allow us to actually put together a coherent plan that includes all of us, not just the people who are at the lowest economic strata. I urge you to support this.
Okay, so the question from Mr. Kakounis was, though, does the trust support it? Is there a vote of the trust, or... Mr. Valentine, good to see you.
Nice seeing you. I chair the Affordable Trust Committee, and we did not, to answer Leo's question, the first we heard about this was when I read about it in the paper, the petition had been submitted. So we invited Mr. McManus to our committee to give us a description of what this process was. We therefore took no, did not vote on it up or down, so we're neutral at this spot. I will say that we welcome, as Don mentions, anything that would help us create more housing. We did have some concerns in our discussion in that our focus right now has been on the so-called workforce housing, affordable housing that we've talked about. We don't want to divert that attention too much at this time. I also, myself, have some questions about, and maybe someone else will know this, how this works, because some of those requirements flow through us, from HUD through the state to the town dos. So I'm not sure even what our flexibility is. But the direct answer is, we have not taken a position.
Thank you. Mr. McManus.
Yeah, as a person who brought this forward, I brought this forward because, as I participate in discussions of housing issues on Cape Cod, it's clear that there is a sector of folks, working folks, working families on the Cape that are at an income level that means that they can't benefit by the programs that are currently in place, but don't earn enough to be able to participate in the private market and get a mortgage, or in many cases, even afford rent on, rent all of a house. So this was, many towns are putting this in effect. The reason this needs to go into effect is that, right now, all of our housing efforts is constrained by two things. One, by the state law that allowed the housing trust to be formed. It's capped that they can only participate in programs that go up to that eighty and a hundred percent level, and it's also capped by their funding source. This would remove the restraint that's imposed by state law and allow participation of the housing trust in developments that would provide housing that would be available to those up to two-hundred percent of average median income, what is becoming defined as attainable housing. It wouldn't, however, change any of the current funding source limitations. All of that would stay in place, and the trust focus now being on low and moderate-income housing is because that's the funds they get. They're not getting funds to provide for that higher-income housing. This also doesn't provide any funding for it, but if you, if we're, if you watch the discussions that are going at the state, it is not, I would not be surprised if some of the money that comes out of the housing bond issue, the four-billion-dollar bond issue that they're talking about, would provide funding sources for these higher-income developments that then the trust could participate in, and in many ways, be able to use their participation in those types of projects to leverage a better result on their low-income housing. I know it's sort of a complex thing I'm trying to explain, but I think both, if both are enacted and funding is separately provided for both, we can wind up with a better product all around.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mary Anderson, East Harwich. I was at the trust meeting where Mr. McManus presented this. I had read it in the Chronicle and thought, I don't think so, we need to stick to affordable. But when he presented this to the trust, what was very clear to me is this doesn't force the trust to deal with attainable housing. force the trust to deal with attainable housing, it makes it possible. So there's no harm. The trust doesn't have to change anything they're doing, just as time evolves if they want to get into that. And as Mr. McManus just explained, if state funding does become available, their hands aren't tied behind their back. So I see no risk to adding this and lots of potential pluses.
Thank you. Mr. Chori.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Chori, Harwich Port. I just want to clarify what 200, 200 percent means. I know the medium, is the median average in Harwich about $80,000 roughly?
Roughly.
Roughly. Okay, so that means someone who makes $160,000 can apply for attainable, which is equating to affordable housing? Is that what that means?
Anybody want to take a? Mr. Valentine, chairman of the trust.
I might be able to answer that. Right now, for one, one member household, 100 percent AMI would be 87,000, so it'll be double that, 100 obviously, 195,000. Two is, though under 100,000, so 200,000. It, and I agree, it gives us more avenue because we have to start thinking there's a difference between funding and, you know, resources and then how we're spending it. It becomes a little bit harder to justify attainable housing when it goes up to 200,000 for a family of two. And that's, that's our only question is we don't want to lose focus on where we're going now. None of us would argue with having more tools available to us, we just want to be a little careful about how we, how we address it in the public and move forward.
Thank you. Further debate? Mr. Chori, you have anything further?
Just, so that means someone who makes 200,000 can apply for attainable housing, right?
It would appear they may be eligible if that was the determination.
Thank you.
Mr. Howe, Ms. Underhill.
Sure.
Underwood, but.
Underwood.
Every year, it's okay.
Every year, right.
It's okay. Um, just, I think, some questions for clarification. I like this, having served on your trust. I think this is a great idea, however, I'm not understanding the protection that's in place for the low income and the moderate income. And everyone here shops at a grocery store, at a CVS, and if you're making $15 an hour, you're in that low to moderate income. And if you're a childcare worker, you're in that low and moderate income. And I can go on and on and on. But at the same time, it's hard for a young family, even making $150,000, you're not going to qualify to buy a house. So I think there's a lot of merit here. I just want to understand if somebody could address this. Is this mean that the low and moderate are in the same bucket or, I'm just a little confused on, are we, if there's a million dollars in the trust, can the decision just be made that it all goes to attainable housing or is there going to be protection for low and moderate income? And maybe I missed something, sorry, Don.
Mr. McManus? Can you answer that question?
Currently, the sorts of funds that the trust deals with are funds that are, come through CPC or other state housing grant funds. Funds that developers use to, who are developing low and moderate income, come through tax credit programs. All of those funding sources are restricted to serving those low and moderate income households. And those funds that the trust receives would have to continue to be segregated from funds that they receive that don't have that restriction and could be used for projects that serve sort of middle, I don't, I don't know how to define it, working class people, people over the low and moderate income threshold. I don't know if that explains.
Well, I think maybe what she's asking, we appropriated money at town meeting last night for the affordable housing trust. Would that money be able to be used, I think is her question, on attainable housing if this was passed?
No.
In addition to?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay.
That's restricted to the low and moderate income projects.
Great, I think that's where she's coming from. Does that answer your question? You're welcome. Yes, in the middle.
Richard Houston. I'm just curious if someone could.
Good evening, Mr. Houston.
Good to see you up front.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify in my own mind, the attainable housing does not, if we were able to get funding and we moved ahead with those kinds of projects, doesn't count towards the 10 percent threshold that's under the 40B restrictions.
Not under the current law.
Okay, yeah.
Further debate? Are you wishing to make a further comment, Mr. Kakounis?
Mr. Houston touched on it, but I'd like to clarify that. Is this in any way going to affect the developers? Because I read quickly that this is for the purpose of the Howard affordable trust fund, but will this action in any way affect and allow outside developers to come in and do 40Bs with attainable housing? Now we got a new word we're going to start to learn. Used to be, they tried workforce, but I guess that didn't work. So is this in any way going to affect a 40B application by a private developer is my question.
Mr. Moderator?
Who wants to respond to that? Mr. McManus?
No, it wouldn't. The 40B.
State statute.
Project stays intact and the rules don't change.
All right. So do we have anybody further on this article? I know Mr. Howe's still up. Yes, ma'am, and then I'll get you over here.
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Chair of the Harwich Housing Committee, Chair of the Harwich Housing Authority. Slightly obsessed with housing. I am going to ask you to support this just because any tool we can have in the toolbox is helpful, although I will agree with most of you, I think this bill is very flawed. I don't think the trust should be worrying about attainable housing. I think there should be other, there are other mechanisms to get that money. But on the off chance that the state is going to give money to the trusts to go up to 200 percent, I'm going to ask you to support it. I know it sounds like a family making 160 to 200,000 dollars a year is a lot of money. You can't buy a house for that, not with the prices on Cape Cod right now. And in fact, it's going to cost you more than 30 percent of your income to rent. So I'm going to ask you to support it just as a tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I have somebody over here? Okay. And Mr. Howe, did you want to?
Yes, just one sentence to underscore what Mary Anderson said. Just understand this as you're voting. This does not require anyone to do anything. It allows for more uses than are currently available.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Brian Wentworth, Alexander Chase. I'm a resident and a business owner in the town in healthcare and the number one barrier we have right now for recruiting people to help all of you is housing. And that's people graduating with bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, doctorate degrees. They still cannot afford housing down here. They don't qualify for affordable housing, but they need another tier. We recognize fully that the Cape community is kind of a retirement destination, but also there is an initiative to get families to move here. And without this next level, that's not possible. There won't be the restaurants we love, there won't be healthcare workers to take care of everyone. And I just hope everyone considers that when thinking about this.
Thank you. Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. We're on Article 46 and the motion is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 47. This is funding for the Chase and Harwich Fort libraries. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 47 be accepted and adopted and at $20,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose.
Motion under Article 47 is accept and adopt, the sum is $20,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article 48. Chamber of Commerce promoting the town of Howard. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 48 be accepted and adopted and $50,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose.
The motion under Article 48 is accept and adopt, the amount is $50,000 to be raised and appropriated for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The vote carries. Article 49. Annual allocation for local cultural council grants. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 49 be accepted and adopted and at $4,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose.
Motion under Article 49 is accept and adopt, the sum is $4,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose. Is there any debate? Yes. Mr. Weiser. I don't think that's on, Bob.
I don't need it.
Hold on a second. Now normally I would, it's a question of scope and now the vote is on notice that we're going to spend more than $4,000. In that the amount is not in the article itself, it simply says a sufficient sum of money and then there's an estimate, I would find that such an amendment is in order. And so if you want to make that amendment, go ahead, we'll write it down up here and then at some point you're going to need to come up, come by and sign it for the town clerk so we have a record of it. But as I understand your motion, it's that the main motion be amended to read that the article be accepted and adopted and the sum of $10,000 be raised and appropriated for this purpose.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
It's working now.
Do I hear a second on the amendment?
Aye.
Okay. So it's a moving seconded. Do you want to address the amendment, Mr. Weiser?
Yes, I'll address it from the microphone. Thank you. Being involved in some work in the cultural sector, I'm aware of the fact that there's insufficient funds to support many of the activities in the cultural sector that the Arts Council is attempting to support. And I think this is a very modest sum and that, given the extensive expenditures we've made for things pertaining to golf courses and dredging harbors for people's yachts, I think we can afford to spend a couple of bucks on the cultural sector. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment? Mr. Kakounis.
I have a question. Where are the excess funds coming from? I mean.
It's raised and appropriated, so it's tax levy.
Okay, tax levy. I would ask that you not support this. We've been supporting the cultural practice here at town meeting floor for a number of years, been giving them $3,000 and they've been raising funds on their own. I see this year, maybe even last year, I don't remember, it was increased to four. And to make an amendment to double the donation, if you will, towards this organization on town meeting floor, I don't think is appropriate and I would ask you not to support it at this time.
Any further debate on the amendment? Looks like we're, was there a hand in the back? Guess not. Looks like we're ready for a vote. So we've got a main motion on the floor, accept and adopt 4,000. The amendment would change the 4,000 to 10,000. All those in favor of the amendments so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Amendment does not carry. So is there any further debate on the main motion at 4,000? Looks like we're ready for a vote on that. All those in favor of the motion, accept and adopt and 4,000 be raised and appropriated so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 50, I'm going to step down on that article, having been the sponsor of it. Mr. Crowell, William Crowell, has generously authored, offered to be the assistant moderator for this article. That takes a vote. So all those in favor of having Mr. Crowell moderate Article 50 so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
Article 50. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to provide for the option of electronic voting at town meetings or take any other action related thereto. Is there a positive motion? Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town meeting vote to direct the town moderator and the town clerk to investigate the feasibility of utilizing electronic voting at town meeting and present their findings, including any draft article, to the select board and the finance committee prior to the next town meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to vote to direct the town moderator and the town clerk to investigate the feasibility of utilizing electronic voting at town meeting and present their findings, including any draft article to the select board and the finance committee prior to the next town meeting. Is there any debate on this article?
Mr. Moderator.
Sir, could you recognize, could you state your name and address so we could recognize you for the.
Absolutely.
Mike Ford, South Street. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. So just a little bit of background for the voters before you vote on this. I was contacted by a number of voters regarding this issue during the course of the year and I actually do some work in other towns, Orleans included, where electronic voting is utilized. It's utilized in Chatham, it's utilized in Eastham, it's utilized in over 70 communities in the Commonwealth now. And I have come to see the benefits of it, particularly on standing counts where a lot of time is used up. And not only that, there's not that our tellers aren't very accurate, but the accuracy of the electronic voting is very accurate. You don't use it all the time. For example, you don't have to take electronic voting on procedural motions. So a moderator can learn when to use it and when not to use it. But it seems to me that it's kind of an advancement of civilization that I thought should be brought to you, the voters, for you to decide. Now, the article that I brought didn't have enough specificity to it. The town clerk and I have agreed that what we would do, if you so instruct us, is to look into it, figure out what the costs are, figure out what the options are, what the companies are that utilize this, what the other communities have done, whether you rent, whether you buy, what makes sense, and then give a report to the selectmen and the finance committee. And then if that results in an article, we bring an article back to the next town meeting. So those are my comments, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Any other debate? Yes, sir.
Hi, guys, how you doing? I'm sorry. Jay Skoronek, I'm a Harwich resident and also a small business owner in town. After last year's town meeting, I actually called the town hall in Chatham to inquire about their electronic voting system. They use a system called Meridian. So I contacted Meridian. The person, the salesperson at Meridian gave me a full quote. Basically, these systems cost $30 per person. Last night we had 450 voters, tonight we have 155 voters. So for example, last night would have cost us $13,500 per the quote I got. I actually submitted the quote to Mr. Powers. So last night with the full house, it would have cost us $13,500 in total for the voting system. Say we got extras, say we needed 500, that would be $15,000. A couple of things, comments, the moderator, we talked about. First thing is, there's three reasons why I want this to be accepted tonight and voted yes on. The first thing is time management, which we all know, last night it was hot, people were getting grumpy to the Girl Scouts. Second is privacy, anonymity. I'm a small business owner in town. It says, even though Harwich is growing, it's still a very small town. Even though Harwich is growing, it's still a very small town. We see each other in the CVS, we see each other in Stop &amp; Shop, we see each other at the gas station, we see each other, people come in my store. If I'm voting against something that you're voting for, or vice versa, it, you know, that's an awkward situation. The comfort level in this room gets very awkward very quickly. You know, you hear comments, you hear little snippets, and I think electronic voting will eliminate that. It's anonymous, so we can all vote comfortably. And lastly, it's also accuracy. When you vote electronically, you know, right now, we're voting orally, like, and you listen for audible votes and a yes or no vote. Sometimes the no votes can be louder than the yes votes, even though there might be more yes votes. So I do think that we should vote yes on this system, or any system. I'm happy to, you know, for you guys to contact more companies, but I definitely think this is absolutely the right step. One small step for man, but one giant step for Harwich voters.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I concur with the prior statements, but just to keep it in perspective, oftentimes people say it's too expensive. It may be $25,000, it may be $30,000, but if you compare that $25,000 or $30,000 to our entire budget that we spend, $70 million, let's move the decimal points over to make that $70 million, $70, that $25,000 becomes 25 cents. So that's the ratio that we're talking about. Is 25 cents on $70 too expensive to promote our town meetings to have private, quick and secure voting? I think it's worth every penny, so thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Tribblestone. I am from East Harwich. I just want to voice my support for this as well. I think it's an exciting thing to have, and to the point of anonymity and privacy. I notice through the time I've been here, that a lot of people sometimes hesitate, and I hear many murmurs of the word no when they vote. I think this would basically just break that, break that ice and really have them vote how they think. Quite honestly, I think they should always own what they believe in, but I can understand where anonymity would be, so I'm all, I'm all for this. I hope this passes. Thank you.
Any further debate? So seeing none, we're still stuck with the archaic system of an oral vote. All those in favor of the motion, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It passes unanimously, it is a vote. Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Great job, as always. Article 51. See if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 19 of the 2023 annual town meeting for the West Howard Sewer Main Replacement Project to include supplementing the funds appropriated under Article 21 of the 2023 annual town meeting for the East Howard Wastewater Collection System Expansion Project. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 51 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 51 is accept and adopt as printed. Any debate? Yes, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just by way of explanation, you've heard quite a bit of discussion this week and the past few weeks about our next sewer extension project, Phase 3. Monday evening, May 13th, the select board is expected to award contracts for those constructions of 1 East and 2 West, which will commence later in the fall at the very, very earliest, if not a little bit after that. The purpose of this article still remains, however, our engineering consulting firm, GHD, in consultation at the time with a water wastewater superintendent, put this article in first in anticipation of the bids that we were receiving, and we were very fortunate to have GHD's cost estimates be spot on and for the bids to come at or below cost. However, the, the original article and the original project that the money is coming from was overestimated in a good way, meaning it was contingency based. We now understand that that project is going to be closer to 1.5 million, and we also know that we are eligible for state revolving fund offsets, so we have more than sufficient funds in that article. The recommendation is to approve this, to add, to augment to Phase 3, 50 million appropriation up to 4 million, so we're not looking for the full balance left over of that other article. The purpose for that request and the recommendation of our engineering firm is by adopting this article, allow the town contingencies related to Phase 3. Some of the contingencies that you've been hearing about, that the board will talk about, include some of the ad alternates that were discussed the other evening, such as Walden Way and the 1 East project, and potentially some other Phase 3 and/or Phase 3A projects. Could also include the great Sand Lake project that's coming up next. Overall, however, this additional funds will ensure that the town will have more than sufficient money to do the design and construction costs that lead to other construction projects. So again, even though we've got sufficient funds on hand, it is a prudent act in the opinion of the town, the engineering firm, and in fact, the bond market, so we would ask your adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any further debate on the motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The genesis of these funds is borrowing, so it'll require a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 52. See if the town will vote to transfer, excuse me, transfer from the retaining, retained earning of the Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of $100,000 to implement a sewer assistance grant program that will provide financial assistance to income-eligible individuals. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 52 be accepted and adopted, and at $100,000 be transferred from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve for Special Purpose Fund for this purpose.
Motion under Article 52 is accept and adopt, the sum is $100,000 be transferred from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve for Special Purpose. Any debate? Mr. Kukounis?
A question, Mr. Moderator. Is this to help people who can't afford to hook up to the sewer line? And how is this going to be dispersed? Is it a grant? Is it going to be a lien on people's property with a low interest return payment like the county does? Is there any indication at all how we're going to disperse this?
I could see what the select board might have to say. It indicates in the explanation that the select board will develop the details. Ms. Kavanaugh, Selectman Kavanaugh.
So this fund will be vetted similar to how people would apply for tax abatements and stuff. There'll be an application process and a vetting, and there'll be a certain income limit in terms of being able to apply for that.
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
The only comment I would add that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. When I was at the county, probably the best program that the county offers is the sewer abatement, or I should say septic abatement program, where they help people put in septic systems, and they also help them hook up to sewer lines. And it's the best because we were able, the county was able to take the funds and leverage more and create a revolving fund. I know a lot of the finance committee don't like that term, but check into what the county does, because it just keeps growing, and it keeps helping people, and helping people, helping people, it never ends. It's a great system, so look into it.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes? Sorry?
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Harwich delegate to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. And as Mr. Kukounis said, the county has a fabulous program that we have recently expanded greatly, which is now called Aqua Fund, which gives 0% to 4% loans to anyone who has to hook up to the sewer. And that's for anyone. If you don't, the income levels are very generous, but even if you make $3 million, you can still get a 4% loan. What I would hope that the town would use this money for would be for the people who can't afford to take out a loan. Even at 0% interest, you have to pay something. So I think that might be the best way to use this money, and that's what, so I'd like people to vote for it in the hopes that we could make that happen. Thank you.
Further debate? Lori, did you have a comment?
Lori Moore, Parallel Street. So, we pay our tax bills based on the value of our homes. How about if we take the same proportion of that $3 million home versus my $300,000 home, and proportionately, that's how much we're going to pay to hook up to the sewers? Did you get that?
We do. I'm not sure that's before us, though, in this article. Yes, Judith Underwood.
Thank you. Just quick, so I think this is a great idea. It's needed, there's that gap, as Elizabeth pointed out, and the county, as Leo pointed out, does, has a fabulous program for septic replacement. My question, as a water wastewater commissioner, because this is before, it would come under our purview, is this something that's going to be handled at town hall? In other words, who's going to be processing all these applications? Because it
Not sure. The article was requested by the select board, and the explanation says that they will develop the details of the program, so I assume they would be looking at that issue as well.
I was just concerned about the amount of funding for it, that's all, to make sure that the administration of it is covered. Thanks.
I think Noreen may have the answer to that, I'm informed.
That's the first time they've ever called me Noreen.
Well, it's late, it's late in the evening, and the meeting is almost over, so I'm losing my opportunity.
Okay. You always say the woman to the right, so I feel I've really moved up. And, and I'm also not going to say speaking on my own behalf.
Okay.
So I'm speaking as a water wastewater commissioner. These funds are not new money. This money was voted in 2019 as part of the very new wastewater operating budget at the time, and it was for the purpose of helping with sewer connections. You know, as things were delayed and went on, previous finance director, Carol Coppola, parked that money in the wastewater retained earnings section as a special purpose. So what's being voted tonight is not new money, it was already voted a few years ago. In addition to that, the management of this program is absolutely not under the purview of the water or the wastewater department. We were, we were simply the keeper of those funds, and now that the town is ready to go ahead with that program, it's being transferred back to the general fund because it couldn't be spent out of our money, so that they can operate this program, which is being designed by the assessing department along with the select board and other people who have those type of credentials to run a program like that. We do not.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further debate on the motion under Article 52? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 53. Herring Fisheries, to see what action the town will take with regard to the herring fisheries. Is Mr. Houston still here? Well, let me get a motion on the floor. Mr. Hughes? Then I'll go to you, Mr. Houston.
I move that Article 53 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
So, Mr. Houston, we have a motion this year that's accept and adopt. Any, any report on the herring?
The herring are running, and I would encourage everyone to get over to Johnson's flume at the reservoir and check out the action. But as we do every year, we also take this opportunity to remember Marge Marion, and she would be quite enthused, not just that the herring are running, but to see all the freedom and democracy being expressed over the last two nights here in the community center. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Any further debate on this article? Mr. McManus?
Actually, just a quick point of personal privilege, I just want to thank the meeting for all the contributions they made for the baked goods and coffee outside. That project was put on by the Key Club at Monomoy Regional High School, and in total, between the two nights, they raised $458 that'll go to the suicide awareness program and the walk that the Key Club will be participating in.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. McManus, and we